Meeting called to order.
Can do roll call? Ms. Don?
Here.
Ms. Kaminsky?
Here.
Ms. Metzweeny?
Yeah.
Ms. O'Grady?
Yeah.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Vice President Gomez?
Here.
Can do the flag legions?
Flag legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, not God, and his results with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Milford Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the daytime of place there of posted in Borough Hall and the New Milford Public Library. Notices having sent to the record and the Tinborough News, the Board announces that under its longstanding policy, it will not discuss to public any comments made by members of the public concerning individual staff members. At this time, please be advised that all cell phones and electronic devices are turned off. Meetings of the Board are open to the public and all members of the community shall free to participate. Before coming to the Board, the chain of command should be followed. There are two portions of the meeting reserved for comments from the public. The first at the beginning of the meeting for agenda items only, and the second at the end of the meeting for other items. Issues raised by the public may or may not be responded to by the Board, but all comments will be considered. The Board requests that all members of the public be mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Due to confidentiality and legal rights afforded by the state of New Jersey, members of the public are asked not to speak negatively or derogatory manner about any employee of the Board or any student. Before we start, I just want to make an announcement regarding us wearing masks. As per Governor Murphy's announcement last Friday, which went into effect yesterday, Monday, August 9th, all students, educators, staff, and visitors, regardless of vaccination status, are required to wear face masks in all school buildings. Therefore, we do have extra masks available for you this evening if you need one. Now, we're going to review the agenda for the regular meeting to be held on August 10th.
Any questions? Yeah. So, I did have some questions regarding that. I'm just going to find my notes here. So, we are going to address the policy, so I'm going to ask the question there. For BA 7, I had a question regarding the calendar. And by the way, I did ask these questions ahead of time, and there were some responses, so I wanted to make sure that they were able to answer them. The approval of the calendar. What really, the main question is around, it looked like the end of the year changed, but then when I realized, we approved in March, that changed. But on the district website, there's two places you can get to the calendar, and one is the February approval and one's March. So, the question is really around parties that need to know about the end of the year, did they realize?
Well, just when you think we have the calendar set, you have the announcement of the new federal holiday.
Correct.
Right? Which compels us to go back and look at it. We're going to table that tonight, though, because in the revision that you have in your packets, there is, it has to be recopied.
Okay.
Because we think that it's off originally, we thought that we were missing a Monday, but there are some, there is one contractual image that comes as a picture here in terms of the total number of days for teachers or staff, so we have to revisit that this weekend. We'll be out next week.
Okay. So, and in that, not stepping necessarily out of the Board role, but I know that Project Graduation has always been an issue with us, like, you know, ending early. So, do we know which day they've planned for already?
I don't know what they planned for, but we're in communication with the high school principal on a regular basis in terms of this. We'll be going through it.
Okay. The other question is on the...
P 28.
I did have a question on, well, I'm going to skip over. P 28, the high school nurse facilitating interim healthcare. So, I know the previous nurse did this position for this that we're putting on there. Has that been discussed with the N and D?
And that also will be tabled tonight, pending a conversation that has been scheduled with the Association President, Lillipage, this coming Wednesday.
And then, P 31. That is in the, it just is district staff appointments. So, on the agenda, there is an approval for 2.5 positions, same person. I know that the Board approved the description of the 0.5 for the administrative assistant for, I want to see the words correctly. I apologize, because I have my notes here, but I don't have a printout. So, we approved the 0.5 for the position of the administrative assistant to the director of Constructive Learning. Based on the last conversation, it was, there was a 0.5 grants writing position in business in the office, that that would just take place of. But this is actually two positions put together that then make a whole position, which then requires benefits, which is different than what was originally discussed. And so, this person that is on here to be approved has a full-time position, which means another full-time position filled. So, instead of it being a 0.5, it's now a whole with benefits. So, that's a very difference, so I would like to table that as well, to be able to have a conversation around that.
It can be tabled, and we can certainly, you know, discuss this further. When it was first proposed, however, I think that there was a fairly common understanding about what that would result in. Maybe Dr. Kuchar, maybe you can share some of your perspective as per the business office.
So, if I can, because I don't want to put her on the spot. At the last meeting, we asked about this position and how it would be covered, and it was stated that it was a 0.5 position that was no longer needed. At this 0.5 position, it would just be at the time.
Yeah, okay.
There was no discussion about combining it with another 0.5 and making it a full-time position, which would then include benefits. So, if it was discussed internally, it wasn't presented that way to the board.
Okay.
So, that's why I asked.
Well, then you could respond to the in-house position.
Sure. So, I think when we were talking about all discussions in the Board Office, we had proposed a bunch of different positions and movement of one, which we established payroll position. And in that, we were going to put together the account table and benefits position. And this opportunity had come up, and it was seemingly a better transition to move that in that regard, and then have somebody else take over the grants position. So, we absorbed that clause through the administrative assistant to the director for additional instruction, who's taking on that. So, it freed up this position of the 0.5 to make 2.5 critical.
Understood, but there's benefits to be had here. And so, and that, this is just for me. I mean, I'm not the only person on the Board, so I'm just, this is just my question on it. So, I want to bring that up, and when we get to the, to the part of the meeting, we can discuss this more. And then, there was actually just a question on F 31, so we're approving an amendment to that lease for the trailer that's at the FGS, which I know, we needed that trailer, now we have to extend it, and it just is what it is, it's the situation that we're in. So, just curious, because this lease is going to go through, I believe, till 2023? That's what it says here? So, what is that in terms of cost to the district?
Not, there's no additional cost, it's just an extension of the lease.
So, we have it, the trailer exists, there's no financial implications, everything, there's no additional cost, it's just an extension of the existing lease. Well, we're releasing, is what I'm saying. Correct. And the reason I'm asking is because this kind of all ties into the whole, you know, looking at what we need in the facilities, right? So, the reason we have the trailer is because we need the space, and we don't have the space, so what is it costing for the, and maybe you can come back with that. What is it costing the district through 23 to have to do this? Because that plays into, you know, when you have to do something in your home, and you say, "I'm going to keep paying for this," or "I'm just going to do this other thing," that's, that's why.
It's $25,000 a year.
Thank you.
That's what I wanted to say. Which has been in place.
Yep.
And so, and the issue is that we can only extend it right now for an additional 24-month period, here we're scheduled to pick it up on September 1st.
Got it.
And so, we didn't want the CST program being rolled around the street.
I understand.
Occupying the trailer, so.
Understood. Okay. That was, that was that, I think, that, and like I said, I had the policy questions, which I can ask her in the Board session, so we'll get to that.
So, are we going to table P 31 this time, since it is two part-time positions, equal to a full-time position, or are we going to?
I think that's a discussion right now for the Board to have around that.
Well, I would like more clarity on that, too, if it is two part-time positions.
They equal a whole?
Yeah.
Right. Sorry.
Another question.
Yep.
The next Board meeting is on September 7th, which is the first night of our shoshana. It's September 8th. I had that to include in my report, that we had to move it to September 8th.
Oh, it's a move. Gosh, proposing.
Yeah, I'd like to propose to.
Okay.
Only because, you know, there are people that observe, like I, for two days, and won't be here, so.
What are the two days?
It's 7th and 8th.
7th and 8th.
Let's start on the 6th.
The 9th, it's the 9th, but it's, right.
So, it's 6th, 7th, and 8th?
No, it starts, and the holidays always start at 9, so it's Sunday.
Okay.
On the 6th.
I got it.
First night is the 7th, well, it's the 7th, and then it's the 9th, if you will, so something to think about.
Okay. You want?
Um, I have a question about BA 7, the approval for us to attend the workshop. And is it my understanding that it's all virtual? And if so, are we giving a cost, unless I don't understand? How that's our question? Even virtual, do you still pay a fee of some kind, or I don't think that's...
Should we flash for a bit? Yes, there is. I don't know what it is. I'll answer. Because they're still doing all the stuff they're doing here. Maybe not as much.
BA's, did you ask?
The workshop.
That, that is the cost. We paid it last year, yeah, there's a fee, and then you can go to the workshop virtually after that for the duration of a year, they have access to it. But that's a cost for the entire Board to go.
Okay.
And just one last question, a question on F 32, approval for Verde County Special Services for Hospital Obstruction. Is that because, because student is ill, or someone, a student is in the hospital, someone can run medical services, help them to teach them, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, as far as the meeting day is concerned, we, I guess we just, let's try and see. Right now, you're going to put in your report until the 8th, so we'll talk, I guess we'll talk about that when we get to our report. Or you want to just put it on the other side? Well, I don't know which day of the week, I apologize.
Yeah, the 8th is a Wednesday.
I could move to Monday to 6th.
That's the 8th day. That's the 8th day.
And if schools focus on the 7th, that's the beginning of the holiday. And then it would be Wednesday, is the 8th. How would it follow on the Tuesday?
Well, there, so we have meeting today, and our next meeting will be until then. If we move it another week later, if there is important business that has to be taken care of for the start of the year, I don't think that's going to happen. Can we do it Thursday?
Thursday.
The 9th?
The 9th.
Please do whatever day.
So, Thursday the 9th?
I think so. One more day.
Are you going to, are you going to do it?
He's going to come, he's going to come, so we can say, he can pass for the 3rd.
If we move it to the 31st, you have to come.
Absolutely.
We won't do that.
Okay. Okay.
Does anyone else have any other questions regarding the agenda? Now, we're going to open to the public for items on the agenda, as outlined in the Milford Board of Education by law 0167. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to two minutes. Motion to open to the public? Nicole?
Motion by Nicole.
After this by Laura, sorry. It does get direct.
It does, doesn't it? You're going to forget something?
Did you get that? I'm sorry.
We have to do a committee of thoughts.
Second by you, Laura?
Yes.
Is there any questions from the public? No?
Because they're not on terms of the work session.
All right, so we're going to close the public for items on the agenda. Superintendent of schools?
We did close.
Oh. Motion to close. Motion. Second, and a poll.
All in favor?
All in favor.
I... No one opposed.
All right. Okay. Now, it's a simple...
Okay, so needless to say, the summer is always a very active time of the time, and it doesn't help to know that the window is closing quickly on our opportunity to get things done. But things have been progressing very well over the summer. We still have some limited staffing positions that have to be filled, and I have to say, it's the result of very last-minute resignations, resignations that came in, for example, just this past week, and that creates certain problems for key positions. But that is ongoing. The principals have been working together, most recently today, they met with Mrs. Adaxta on focusing on opening plans, opening days, professional development, et cetera, et cetera, and you'll hear more about that when Lauren gives her report. Facilities-wise, a lot of projects still underway. The, Brian Iaro and his team have been doing remarkable work, and we are sure that everything will be ready for opening day. Of course, something that is on many people's minds are what will school be like come opening day. We received a letter this past week outlining plans that are currently in place, but also you've got to bear in mind, too, that as before, those plans are subject to modification depending on COVID circumstances. Right now, we are opening full-time for all students in person. There is no, there is no remote option available in the state of New Jersey. All students and staff will be required to wear masks. The, any updates to the plan, the reopening plan, or the opening plan, or the road forward, whatever name it goes by these days, they will be updated as needed in preparation for opening day and subsequent to that as well. The, Lauren will also speak a little bit about the protocols that will or will not be in place when students arrive, when all of our students arrive in the beginning of September. Other than that, I do want to take the opportunity to thank the Board for their support. This is my last meeting. I say that, there are probably two angles for that. I'm kind of happy that it's my last meeting, but I'm not happy that it's my last meeting. I think that we have grown together tremendously over the past 12 years. I have enjoyed every minute of it, and I have great admiration for the, for the perspective that you bring to the table, for the integrity that you bring to a Board of Education, regardless of the, of the changes. And it's important to keep in mind that as things are subject to change, whether it's new Board members, new administrators, new curriculum, there's always that adjustment period. But it's so important to recognize how fragile a, a school district's equilibrium can be, especially with the introduction of changes in the administrative structure, or the Board for that, that matter. The dynamic is something that is very tender, and it's something that is really important to think about and protect going forward. I think you've all done a marvelous job of that. I thank you tremendously for the opportunities that you have given me and the support that you have given me over the years. I've said it before, and I'll say again, I have not had a bad day of work, so I'm technically on vacation this week, but I was looking forward to coming to the meeting. Not because it's my last meeting, but because of the dynamic and the level of engagement and the sincerity that you bring to the process of reviewing all agenda items, and you don't really, are you taking that personally? But it, but it's very true. And as administrators, it helps to keep us sharp also, because, you know, there are important questions, and yeah, it's important to know the answers to those questions and to have a solid basis for making a recommendation, and because it all contributes to that whole. So, with that said, that concludes my report, and I thank you all so very much.
I have a comment.
Okay.
I have a comment. So, obviously, the full Board isn't here, you know, different things, whatever, so we look forward to being able to celebrate you, you know, in September, so this is not the last time that you will see us, but I...
Is that a threat?
I don't know. I don't know. But I just want to thank you, too, because really, I got on the Board, you were here, and you know, it's really, it's been my entire experience, and you've been that steady person, and everything that's happened throughout the years, like you said, you know, there's changes, and all those changes, some of them can be disorienting, some of them can be exhilarating, it just depends on what it was, and I just really, I thank you, because so many things I've heard about Boards and their relationships with their superintendents, and I never felt that way. I never felt like we couldn't say something to you, bring something up to you, disagree with you, agree with you, you know? It just, I just never felt that way. I never felt that, that feeling of animosity that I hear about in so many different places, so I want to thank you, because it's been the only experience that I've had, and it's been wonderful, so thank you.
I thank you, as I listen to the thunder roaring, that might be a sign. Besides Joe, I know who's here. I had the pleasure of interviewing you, you and many others. And I have to say, I'd offer to anybody to go back 12 years, 13 years, to see where the district was and where we are today. So, out in itself, I mean, words can't even express my gratitude, so I thank you.
That time went so fast, I hope.
I know. Thank you.
Okay. Director Kirkland, instruction. Lauren Duska?
Hi, good evening, everyone. So, as Mr. Fluzi has shared, we have been busy, probably from spring on, planning our reopening, as well as our regular activities that we engage in over the summer. As shared at one of our earlier meetings, we are welcoming new faculty and staff members back for a comprehensive new teacher orientation on August 24th, 25th, and 26th. The days are filled with valuable sessions with many of our administrators, our teachers. President Page will be meeting with them and having lunch one of the days, so I think it's a great opportunity for them to familiarize themselves with our vision and also familiarize themselves with our policies and practices. The final day, we're actually holding it virtually, to give them kind of a crash course in remote learning. I think that's one of those lessons learned that is reflected in the district goal for this school year, that we're going to kind of take everything that we learned from our experience in the last year and put into practice. So, we will be putting them in their students' shoes, kind of giving them a taste of how their students learned last year, and then reviewing the platform, should we ever need to lean on that in a future emergency, which we all hope that that is not the case. But we did incorporate that in there, thinking about the remote effective learning piece. We are planning our opening day activities for September 1st, welcoming all of our staff back. We will have traditional meetings for all staff, covering the nuts and bolts, reopening information, updates to achieve MJ, observations and evaluations. We'll be talking a little bit about our one-to-one initiative that we are rolling out. We are continuing to keep the Chromebooks in students' hands, so that will be a nice addition in the next school year. And we'll also have keynote and hear from other district administrators. Earlier today, Principals and I met, and you know, we were very focused on the reopening plan, and in Mr. Fluzi's letter that was shared with families last Friday, all students, teachers, staff, and visitors will be required, regardless of vaccination status, to wear masks, so we are planning accordingly. And we're modifying screening procedures so that the form, the recording form that parents and staff have traditionally, traditionally filled out prior to their arrival at school, we are continuing the screening procedures upon students' arrival to school, but there will be a revised screening report as needed, that will be self-reported mechanism. So, if parents are traveling, if a child in the home is presenting symptoms, that will be able to, parents will be able to share that with us via a form, but it's not going to be a required form for everybody every day. That being said, when students are arriving at their school, there will be designated points of entry in all of the school buildings, and temperatures will be taken. If students happen to be presenting any symptoms or have a temperature, they will be moved to a... they will be moved to an isolated area as we did last school year and the proper protocol will be followed. We are continuing to support traffic flow and movement of students and staff in the buildings. We are moving away from the one-way because we are now accommodating 100% of our enrollment. So that becomes a little bit more challenging, but we still will, you know, continue to have support in hallways, kind of helping students move along and making sure that we don't gather for too long in the individual area. I'm happy to share that we will be able to accommodate all students for lunch in all of our schools. We worked out the spare footage and looked at the number of students that we would be able to accommodate. We are distancing students to the nearest extent possible. And I think it will be a nice kind of return to normal for those kids to be able to sit with their peers and have lunch. Also at this time, we are anticipating a virtual after-school night for families. However, a final decision will be made in early September and shared once we have a little bit more guidance and we get back into the buildings and see how things go. All of this updated information is being compiled and it will be shared with families in late August prior to students' return to school by September 8th. We are trying to hold off because, as you can see, decisions are still being made. Information is still being shared with us. We anticipate additional information coming down and rather than send multiple messages and multiple multiple messages with a lot of information, we're trying to streamline that so that it's as clear as can be. But that will be available to you at the end of August. So as we return to school, we anticipate some anxiety, some trepidation, kind of like the first-day jitters may be a little bit increased. So I'm happy to share, and I'm not sure that the camera can pick up what's on screen tonight, but we've partnered with CarePlus MJ and will be having, providing a family series throughout the school year. There will be one formal workshop a month that's open to parents, caregivers, family members, also staff. And it's really about how best we can help you support your students at home. Each month there is a date. They're already identified in this brochure, which I'm going to blast out to families via school messenger. You can go, you can scroll through, but I'm not sure that you can actually see the dates on that screen. The first date is actually September 15th. It is the third Wednesday of every month. All of the meetings will take place virtually. The reason that we are continuing the virtual meetings for the family series is because last year we had a lot of success with participation and engagement, unlike any of our other meetings that we've seen. And I know it accommodates more schedules. We want to keep that going. You can join from anywhere, any device that's internet-ready and so our September topic is actually going to be re-entry anxiety, how to overcome it. We're following in October with helping children cope with COVID-19 stress and post-pandemic transitions. In November, managing anger and frustration and tips to keep them calm at home. And December, supporting children in your own emotional wellbeing. CarePlus has been a wonderful resource for our faculty and staff for years now and has been working alongside our students. We're very excited to bring them into all of your homes. And future topics for these meetings, obviously, will come from needs that we're seeing. So we'll be engaging with the pandemic response teams and our parent groups across all of the schools to help us identify what some of those later topics will be. So I wanted to share this with you. I think it's a nice support. It's a great way for us all to stay connected in the coming year. Like we've done before, we're going to get through it. We can do it together. And look for this message coming to you via school messenger later this week. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge that this is Mr. Pulizzi's final meeting. I've been putting this off and I will still reserve some of my comments for our formal gathering. But I do want to express my gratitude to Michael. Thank you. It was several years ago now that I joined New Milford and I think back to that day. And whenever I tell someone, you know, that I work at New Milford and I'm always talking about people here. And when you've been in other places and you've worked with different people, you realize how truly special it is when you work with people as wonderful as all of you and you, Michael. When we're in administration, people don't often think of us as teachers, right? Because we're not in the classroom and meeting with students every day. But you are a true educator. There are many lessons learned that I guess in the coming months I will see as equipment to practice. And I think back to conversations that we've had and just special moments that we've shared. It's going to be time to kind of, that application of learning things that we often talk about with students. So be sure to keep it in the loop and let me know how that goes. But I want to thank you for trusting me, supporting me in this role and, you know, for whatever we call it. I tend to get choked out, so I will share more and more of that in the evening. And that concludes my report.
Do you have any questions?
I have a question. With all COVID and opening, everything is so fluid. Will there be a place on our website where up-to-dates, live up-to-dates will be occurring? So anybody could just go to the website and see exactly what's going on?
Yeah, so right now the website kind of houses a lot of different information. Our reopening site has our initial remote plan for when we were upon the school closure and then the hybrid learning plan. So we're going to clean that up. We still have those other plans that we will keep should we need to employ them at a later date. But it will be cleaned up toward the new school year with all of the reopening information.
Thank you.
As well as delivered via the message to families again in a letter.
Thank you. So it's a lot, which is good, as usual. So I guess a couple of questions. For the reopening portion of it, you're saying that for the revised screening, so it's before the end of the year, it was daily. Parents went on, students, whatever, they had to do it every single day. So that will go away and it will be replaced, not replaced, but it will be something where you're coming in, you're getting screened. But if your child is not coming in or you have, they have interaction or whatever, the request is to use that?
Yeah, so basically the recording form, if we were, we had about 60% of the students in person. We didn't have 100% in person. So that was manageable, right, with that screening form? So now we are going to continue the screening procedures upon arrival. But if a student is at home and let's say they recently traveled with a family, there was an emergency and they had to maybe cross state lines or go out of the area. Or during the night, my child didn't feel well and they're coughing. Those are, there is going to be a recording form for parents to communicate with us. And then we will be able to contact them directly with next steps and guidance.
So, and the reason I ask that is because before screening, if you, your child was, you know, had a fever or whatever and you were going to call them out, you called the nurse and you leave a message and that would be the end of it. So will it be communicated to families that this, you know, you may call into the nurse, but you're expected to do this too? Yes, always? Okay. That's, that was one question. And then you did say something about it'll be compiled and shared and that we're making sure that we have all the most updated information. And you said something about anticipating additional information. So what, where do you anticipate additional? Because I know there's always talk within the educational community about things that may or may not arise. So I didn't know if there was anything specific?
Well, masks, for example, was the most recent one. You know, there are still lingering questions. You know, we talked to other administrators of other districts. I'm sure the CASA will have some information coming down from the county. But quarantine procedures, when students need to be, stay home, then what happens? So we're trying to seek, we're seeking clarification. We're not the only district that's receiving clarification. So like masks, because we weren't the only district receiving, I mean, we're kind of thinking that additional information will be forthcoming. And that will all be shared.
And that went to my last question, which was I had reached out on that. So now remote will not, no longer be an option, right? So, and meeting in the way that you don't choose remote, you're in. And so the quarantine, you just, you touched on it. Right? So when a team, when a staff member or a student needs to quarantine, before, and maybe that's what you're talking about, before it was 10 days or 14 days, depending on their status and where they were. So then they would just go remote. But now that since there's not really a remote option, and I also anticipate some quarantining happening because it's just, I feel like it's inevitable. Maybe hopefully not a lot, but it's inevitable. What would we do? Because that's a lot of days to not be in the classroom.
So the guidance that was released for school districts in June from the New Jersey Department of Education titled "The Road", it's "The Road Ahead" or "The Road Forward"? There's so many roads. It's "The Road Forward", communicates the elimination of the option for parents for remote learning. So parents can no longer opt for remote learning. Virtual learning can count towards the 180-day requirement if there is a declared state of emergency, a declared public health emergency, or a directive or recommendation by appropriate health agency or office. It also mentions that districts should be prepared to provide virtual instruction should students or classes need to be quarantined. That's all it says. Obviously, we have questions. So that, those are the kinds of things that we're hoping additional information will come to us, if not through the department. And I'm sure, I know these are conversations that are happening around the county. So we anticipate having some of that guidance and some of those answers rather than sending it out as we received it. So you don't have to feel our pain, sort of speak. You know, we're hoping to get those answers so that we can streamline and a little bit clearer.
Would we consider some of the funding that was out there, grant funding for technology that would make that virtual instruction easier, better? Microphone, you know, camera, whatever it is. I mean, I'm imagining a teacher now having a majority in the classroom and maybe, you know, we're half and half, I don't know. But having that happen because in the elementary, it's a little different because they're all in the one room. But when you're in the middle in the high school and they're switching around, I kind of anticipate the hybrid situation all over again in some instances. So would that be part of the funding?
Could be.
Any consideration?
I'm curious, I'm actually curious to see how tonight is. Are we being heard, the idea that it'd be wonderful?
Are we being heard?
Yes.
So yes. So, but you know, because of that. And I know that, you know, there's different kinds of technology out there. So I was just curious about that.
It certainly would fall into that realm. I think it would just be determining what the specific needs or what type of technology would need in that type of instruction. But it certainly would fit in that criteria.
And I'm not saying equip every single room in that way. But I don't know if there's a possibility to allow for even portable type things where you have so many for each building and I don't know. It's just, I just see this as being a thing that's not going to, you know, just when we thought we were going in the right direction and, you know, something happens, we definitely don't want to go back to fully remote or even hybrid. We want to be able to continue. We've done a lot of things to make the school safer. But still, if somebody has to quarantine, then that's, it almost becomes a punishment now.
Sure. So I'll note that and talk with our district technology coordinator, who we have more feedback from experiences last year. Yeah. But yes, I definitely think that doesn't allow for this kind of funding.
That's all. Thank you so much. Any other questions? Does this mean the sharing of course, Stephanie Gutjar?
Just thought you had a
Sarah, here's your
I can actually send you mine if you want.
Okay, thank you.
So I want to start off my report tonight to say thank you to Mr. Pulizzi as it's your last meeting and it's the superintendent of schools. I'm truly grateful it's been part of your journey here, if only for a year. During the past year, a global pandemic has changed the educational landscape forever. But at the forefront of every decision was the students. And I think under your leadership and guidance, we were able to navigate those waters and have a truly successful school year. You've even guided me professionally to figure out creative ways to stretch a dollar as far as possible for the students of the community of New Milford. So for that, I'm forever thankful and I wish you the very best in your retirement.
Thank you so much.
And then as far as the board office report, we welcomed Melissa yesterday. She's a payroll specialist. She hit the ground running, transitioning with Kate, learning the ins and outs. We recently transitioned from using time clocks to portals, which is making it easier for some of our staff who's not on salary to record their time. So it pulls directly into the portal. She had experience with this from her prior district. We started it in July. Kate was very successful in doing it. Melissa's come on and already given us different opportunities and ideas on how to make it even better. She's only been here for a day, so that was promising. And then we're also, Kate's transitioning into a more true assistant business administrator position, which is great for her growth. And I'm definitely excited to have that support. So my office has been running and functioning and we have all the pieces in place in terms of that. And then we still have a ton of facility projects that we're working on. One of them were recently, I think I've asked Frank to redo the secure vest rule for the board office about 12 times. And we finally got one that doesn't cost much to the district and it will be a safe a safe, secure place. Um, and so that's the final secure vest rule in the district. So we look forward to presenting that to the chief of police and then sending that down to the department of education for approval and we're looking forward to that. Um, that is at the back of the high school in Street Volkerl. But it's an entrance that before I got here, I had no idea existed. Um, but we receive a lot of deliveries and so it's definitely a much needed thing and I look forward to seeing that through. Um, we also, I spoke about it previously, but the lens system is being fully installed at the high school. Um, last week, they cut open the ceiling with possible asbestos exposure. We immediately notified everyone, had the building tested, um, barricaded everything off and all was well and they proceeded with the installation of the lens system. It's also being installed at Berkeley Elementary School this summer. So both of those schools will be completely outfitted with the lens system, um, D E O.
Do you just do with the lens system?
It's a, um, it encompasses all of security. So we have strobe lights, panic bars. Um, the, the high school is integrating it through the P A system. Um, the middle school has, it alerts of any emergency on outside lighting as well. Um, and then we will be doing the G I B S and finishing D E O next year into next summer. Um, the last thing that is an ongoing project is the lighting. I spoke about this previously. Um, and we're going to be outfitting all of the lighting to go to L E Vs to save on energy costs. And through those savings, we'll be doing a larger A C S. So more information will be coming on that. Um, included in that is the H VAC. We're still waiting to hear back from the county on the G I B S rooftop unit, but we will have to, we spoke about this time and time and time again. Um, the money's in the budget for it this year. It should be included in the cost of the direct install project, however, the money is there. Um, and we're just waiting on the approval to move forward with that project. And that concludes my report.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, to you for those that don't use that entrance. I know there's, it's streaming, there's a lot of people hearing this. Um, it's, even now, people will say to me, where, where's the, what do you mean, where's the board office? I don't know, because they don't understand why that entrance has to be secured, what it, like, I know, but.
So right now, the entrance opens up into a hallway that goes right into the high school building. Um, so the idea would be we can't stop a means of egress, so we can't use that as a secure vest rule. So we're going to create a door, everything has to be A D A compliant. Um, so we're thinking of using the existing door that's behind the building. However, due to parking, we can't put it there because there's not enough space for an A D A ramp to get into the building. Um, so we will be going through, um, the wall, an existing wall, but it's not going to stop a means of egress. There's still going to be that entrance and it's going to be directly into the board office and they'll be secure inside of the board office. And then we're actually creating, it's an existing office space that will go into the superintendent's side.
Excellent.
And we'll have a shared workspace in the middle. And my hope is with the saving of all the paper and moving to such a computer-based, um, actually, I have another point on that, to remove one of the copiers, they'll be leased, to save money on a copier. Um, and so it'll be a shared copier. But this past year, we saved $40,000 of paper.
Wow. Nice. Got to fill them in.
I mean, I'm optimistic here.
Optimistic, yes.
So that was an expense we didn't have.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. And then did, did you have a question about the lens?
I guess, yeah.
And the H VAC, the G I B S, you sent, we budgeted for it, but now we're hoping it's part of the direct install, so that may be something too where there's a saving.
Right. So more to come on that.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Any other? Okay.
So policy committee, Joe's up here today. I can do it on the, I'm on the policy page. I'm going to seek approval for, this is for first reading of the following policies regulation. P zero one three one, P zero one six eight point zero one, P one five two one, P one six four nine, P two four two one, R two four two one, P three one three four, P and R three one four two, P and R three two two one, P and R three two two two, P and R three two two three, P and R three two two four, P and R four one four six, P and R five four six zero point oh two, P and R six four seven one, and P eight five six one. Any a motion?
Nicole done. Second in line, Laura Brady.
Comment?
Yeah? Question? Okay. So for the first reading, um, I did have a question because we've never done this before. The M, what it stood for, and I found out it's mandatory, so that's good. So for the public, it's good to know.
Mandated.
Mandated, sorry. Mandated, mandatory. Mandated. But it's, but we've never done that. So I think that's great that we are able to do that. Thank you. And then, um, the, and I know you responded to this, so I apologize, come asking again. So regulation two four two one, which is the vocational technical education, has been abolished. Is there a, and this isn't abolished by us, it's abolished overall. So is, what's in there going into the policy for career and technical or what happened?
So, um, Dr. Kuchar and I worked on with the responses to the questions.
Yes.
And that was on my computer. Yeah. She actually, um, had, was the, the voc tech policy question about the one that was abolished. What, what was the question?
I know. And I'm sorry, because I don't have my phone. The vocational, the, the regulation for the vocational technical institution is abolished. And then policy for career and technical has been revised. So abolishment doesn't mean that we abolished it, it's, you know, that's how it's Strauss estimated. But what was the change to the career and technical? Did we take anything from that?
Regulation. I have to pull that up.
And I know you said it and I'm sorry, I don't want to be on my phone, but I'm on my.
Probably should just go. I'm sorry, what policy, I'm already talking about the.
Uh, two four two one. They're right next to each other, right? I'm looking at you out here, I'm just trying to. So that was one that, you know, it was a.
So it, it's, it's all around vocational, it's, the language goes from vocational to technical. Um, and then within the policy, it, um, provises anything that was vocational technical and it replaces it with the technical.
Right. And that, and that's what I'm, okay, I have to hear. So the, and, and the reason that I'm asking it is because there is a focus on that non-collegiate bound learner and all of that. So I just, I want to make sure that it's clear that it's not, we're not going in that direction. It's that whatever was in there is being rolled into the policy and the policy is being updated with the wording. And that's really all there is to it, right?
Yeah.
Um, and then, uh, on P and R, five four six zero oh two. That's the new, right? It was the bridge year pilot program that the governor assigned. Um, and in that, it calls for a role titled the bridge year liaison. Um, and I know you've responded to this, so I just want to make sure that it's clear that is this going to be a new position, a stipended position, or will someone in the administration be taking on this role?
Administrator is the bridge year pilot program or the bridge year liaison? And there is no stipend?
Okay. And I think that's going to guidance, is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Palala.
Okay. That was it. Those were my questions for that. So I appreciate, thank you.
Laura?
I just want to follow up on the, the, um, the bridge pilot as well. Um, who determines, I, I read it over three times and I had some to look. Who determines if they want to have that bridge year? Is it a student determines it? Is it a teacher? How does that determine? I was a little confused. Who determines if they can, students can have that bridge year?
That's a good question.
So, so they're going to buy?
That's it. There. Is there a change in the year? I was reading so many because of the topic.
There's certain criteria that needs to be met in order for them to be eligible for, um.
Right. It just, it didn't seem clear to me as to who decides, like, can a student just say, I feel like I've had learning loss and I like to, or teachers determine, or someone's determined the student needs. I was confused on that.
So there's certain criteria in order for students to be eligible for the bridge year, including, um, for example, a certain, uh, grade point average. And they would express interest to our bridge year, Bea Misana, who happens to be our supervisor, supervisor of guidance, uh, Mrs. Palala in the high school. And then she, because we did have students who graduated class twenty one. Thanks. I want to say expressed interest. Two different students who required and asked questions about it. And then, um, additional information as far as the specifics of, uh, what the program entails, our share, the students opted not to move forward with it.
So it comes from the students?
It comes from the students.
It's initiated either from the student or their parents.
It wouldn't be granted unless they were eligible at all criteria.
All right. And I just have one more question about the policy on the live stream and D E O being paid. There was, um, section J, um, I know it's kind of funny, they call it the year, but I, I checked out what it said. I was just wanting to clarify on something. It says that public comment period are reserved for individuals who are in person at board meetings. A member of the public present at a board meeting may address the board in accordance with law and board policy meetings. However, members of the public not present in their person, um, and who may be watching the board remotely will not have the ability to come. So I just want to clarify, obviously, they're not here, they can't say anything. But does, does that mean that, are we still keeping, where they can ask questions online? Are they still, we're keeping that, right? That's not getting rid of that?
I, I don't think there's any plan to eliminate that.
Okay. So that's not saying that they can communicate and ask questions because they're not here.
Right. So we're not going to ask, people aren't going to ask questions live?
I'll do my best.
They can just ask prior to the meeting and then we, unless they're here in public.
Well, as so long as the Open Public Meeting Act will allow. So that all originated when, um, there was a declared public emergency that allowed for remote meetings and there had to be a way that the public was able to participate. So now, and it's all in code, um, so now they're waiting on clarification as to whether there's going to be an allowable, um, forum or any of that. So I think as of now, there's no plan to, to eliminate it. I think everything is sort of dependent on the health emergency and sort of whatever happens thereafter. So I think it's, it's sort of a fluid situation based on the guidelines and what, um, come up.
So it's all connected to the, yeah, it's sort of all the current ready of the public meeting act.
Okay.
So, so in that regard, I believe, I, when I read this, I kind of felt like it was the ongoing, uh, meetings, similar, but that, what we do is an exception. Um, in other words, we, uh, anyone from the public can, can write in and ask that something be asked or whatever, but it's not always read out in public, right? Someone sends an email to the board, the board receives it, but it's not read out in public, right? An email just before this. So this, this form that they can go into, those questions should be read in public as if they were here. And to your point, that is because the Open Public Meetings Act required that we provided another way to do that. So we're still providing that other way unless we hear otherwise. But it's not in our policy. We didn't change, we're not going to change our policy for that. This is in regards to that act. So the question is, I guess for me, is that it's, is it okay that we have that exception and, and don't indicate it? Because we didn't have to indicate it before because it was the Open Public Meetings Act and we had to abide by it. So is that okay that we don't put it in the policy?
I believe so because they're addressing it. Thank you.
Because it's an exception.
Correct.
Okay. Good.
Thank you. And?
Any other?
I just have one question. Back to the bridge year pilot program. Is this just for general education or general ed and special education?
General and special ed.
Will it be one for special education? Because isn't this same?
No, she said it is. It's both. No, it's both. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yes.
Okay.
Special ed kind of went down its own, so you didn't hear it.
Oh, I didn't hear it. Yeah.
Okay. Is anything regarding the board committee reports? Anyone want to report on that? Okay. Any additional board items? Old business, new business? That'd be new. Ding. So we brought up the Chromebooks, right? So we're going to continue to, um, provide Chromebooks to the students, especially because there may be an emergency and then they have to do that. Um, in this past year and a half, I believe that from my own, uh, visual, seeing in the hallway, you know, the vest rule when you come in, that the technology is not always taken care of and respected by all who take it home. So we just kind of gave it out and then it broke and you got a new one and then it broke and you got a new one. And how it broke and how you broke, it didn't really matter. We just wanted to make sure everyone had one. And now as we're going forward, I want to bring up for the board the consideration of making a change to our technology policy that, um, like in other districts that used to have one-to-one before we did, that has some type of a responsibility onto, now there is in our technology policy, now there is. If it's not returned, you, maybe your grades are withheld or if you transfer out, right? Your information's withheld. But, and, and I think it needs more discussion, but there needs to be something because it is a cost to the district. And yes, we do have a, uh, we do have something in place, you know, lease and replacements and all of that. But I know that it got a little dicey towards the end where it was like, you know, how many do we have and do you, does, does a family need one or do they have one? Because then that one could be used. And I, you know, and I know of anecdotal stories of people moving out of town and then forgetting to give the Chromebook back. So, or seeing on social media, oh yeah, don't worry, mine broke theirs and I just, you know, and then you find out like it's smashed. It's not just like that it didn't work. So again, I don't really have a suggestion as to how to work it, but I feel like we need to look into the policies of schools that did one-to-one prior to all of this and see how we can do that so that we can make sure that the district and our technology is just as protected. So, that's it. Okay. So it's, it's more for the policy committee and maybe, um, good discussion. Any, I don't know if anyone else has anything about.
I have a different type of business, but not, uh, two. Um, on what, at the last, the life change regular meeting, I think it was, this is the page that brought up, um, a couple of stuff about the assistant leader coordination section that wasn't discussed, I was wondering the status of that was, that's, and it was not on our agenda, is that something that's been talked about?
I'm sorry.
The, the position that was tabled in the, in the previous.
The position of the assistant data coordinator?
I think that's in your personal story.
It's kind of a conversation. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
You didn't repeat it though, she didn't hear you.
Oh, okay. Um, so, um, that's part of the conversation with Mrs. Page this company once again.
Okay, okay.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I just want to add something on behalf of Tanya, who's not here today. She attended the Eagle Scout ceremony and as a board, we want to congratulate John David Papé, Ryan Westerbeld, Paul Wallerman the fifth, and Benjamin Salasco. Any board member request for additional information? Anything else? No? Okay. So we adjourned. Need a motion to close the meeting? Judy, seconded by Laura Brady.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. There you go. Start to next one.
Please do roll call again? I don't think so, though. Roll call again, she said.
Oh. You don't have to. Okay. So committed the whole, I mean, we're approving a minutes for July thirteenth board retreat, July thirteenth work, July thirteenth regular, and July twentieth special. I need a motion. Tammy, seconded by Paige. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We're going to open to the public for items on the agenda as outlined in the mail for Board of Education by Law zero one six seven. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to two minutes. Any motion by Paige? Seconded by Nicole. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Does anyone from the public have anything on the agenda? Okay. So we're going to close to the public. I need another motion. Laura, seconded by Judy. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi Superintendent Schools.
Well, I have nothing more to add, but I'll just reiterate, uh, for, for the record that, uh, two items, BA seven and P twenty-eight, um, will be tabled pending, uh, further review of the actual session.
Okay. Twenty-eight. Director of curriculum instruction, Laura Dutton?
Um, just one other thing earlier, the, um... No, actually I don't have anything else.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry. Girls? Business administrators, do you think, Kishar?
No, nothing to add.
Nothing to add, okay. So board action. I seek approval for BA eighty-nine, BA six. I need a motion. By Paige, seconded by Tammy. All in favor?
Aye.
Educational programs and curriculum committee, Laura Brady?
I seek approval for C three and C four.
Can I motion myself?
No, you don't ever get to.
No. Paige, motion by Paige, seconded by Nicole. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed.
Personnel recommendations. How about the recommendation on the superintendent?
Some before, before you do that, though. So we tabled P twenty, P twenty-eight? P thirty-one? Uh, P thirty-one too. Thank you. Okay.
So I'm seeking a motion for P one twenty-one, P one eighty-nine, P one ninety, P eighteen, P nineteen, P twenty, P twenty-one, P twenty-two, P twenty-three, P twenty-four, P twenty-five, P twenty-six, P twenty-seven, P twenty-nine, and P thirty. Seek a motion. By Paige, seconded by Laura Brady. All in favor?
Comments or questions and then she goes to roll call.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
I do have a comment. Welcome back to Nicolette Perna. Yeah. She left, she was, she went for more, uh, just advancement, you know, there's only so many, so, well, welcome back to her. I was happy to see that. And thank you. That's it. And also congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So roll call? Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Kmentzki?
Yes.
Ms. Kmentzki?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Goldman?
Yes.
Passes six zero. Passes six zero. Thank you. Hi, Anthony. Judy T.
I seek approval for F fifteen, F sixteen, F seventeen, F eighteen, F nineteen, F twenty, F twenty-one, F twenty-two, F twenty-three, F twenty-four, F twenty-five, F twenty-six, F twenty-seven, F twenty-eight, F twenty-nine, F thirty, F thirty-one, F thirty-two, F thirty-three, F thirty-four, F thirty-five, F thirty-six, and F thirty-seven.
Need a second? Laura Brady? I need the first motion. Judy, okay. So facilities committee, is there anyone else here from the facilities committee?
Laura.
Laura, you want to go? Laura?
I seek approval for FA two and FA three.
Need a second? Nicole Dunn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Athletic co-encouragement? That's me.
Uh huh.
I seek a motion for AC one. Need a second? Paige?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So, policy committee, you can do that as well. Um, I'm seeking approval for P zero one three one, P zero one sixty point zero one, P one five two one, P one six four nine, P two four two one, R two four two one, P three one three four, P and R three one four two, P and R three two two one, P and R three two two two, P and R three two two three, P and R three two two four, P and R four one four six, P and R five four six zero point zero two, P and R six four seven one, P eight five six one. Need a second? Nicole Dunn? All in favor?
Aye.
Now it's time for the board committee reports. Does anyone have anything to present? Any additional board items?
Old business? So I don't think this is, it's kind of old business, so we just approved the policy zero one six eight oh one, which is live streaming video recording. At our meeting in June, we spoke about approving it and that, starting with that meeting, which is currently on our YouTube site, um, that is not public, that after this meeting, since we approved it, that our July meetings and tonight will all be made public. Is that correct? Am I correct in that?
That's why I...
Yeah, okay. So, for those that may be watching the live streaming, um, the June, July meetings and this evening's meeting, after this, after this evening, will remain, uh, public. And I, I personally want to make a comment. Thank the board for, um, for continuing to listen to the public, but also doing our job that we were, uh, elected to do, which was to make sure that the district is supported in everything we need to do to run well. We had every meeting since the very beginning as virtual. We made sure that we were open and, and provided as much, uh, ability for the public to comment as possible. And even in returning to being in person, we brought, you know, made sure we brought on the live streaming. Every meeting gets better and better. Thank you, Dan. So I just, um, I just, uh, being on the board, I want to commend the board for continuing to do the work and to not lose focus on what we needed to do, but then to continue to, to make progress. So, thank you to everyone for doing that. That's it.
New business?
I did have something else that I wanted to share. I'm sorry. So I, I don't know if this is early in the phase where I want to share it, but I wanted to thank, um, I said we were, were busy this summer preparing for the new school year and, and there's also some really meaningful, purposeful professional development, uh, that is to be in place in the summer for not only our new teachers and our new faculty as staff, but also our administrative team. So, uh, tomorrow, Dr. Careau will have, uh, principals for a, uh, Principal's Special Education Summit. And on July seventeenth and eighteenth, Dr. Chismalis has planned an admin leadership academy. So a comprehensive two-day leadership institute, uh, the first day will be reserved for our new administrators, Nicolette Perna, Heather Gilgallan, our special ed supervisor, and Patricia Parro-Pastro, our new elementary vice principal. And on day two, the entire administrative team, uh, will be joining together. So we're really excited about that. And it's, it's nice to see how some of these things that the board has supported, uh, continue to support us as we prepare for the new school year. So thank you.
Thank you. Any miles? Okay. So we'll open to the public as outlined in the mail for Board of Education by Law zero one six seven. Each statement made by our participants shall be limited to two minutes. Motion? Motion? By Paige, seconded by Laura Brady. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any questions on the website?
Yeah. You want me to do it?
Oh, yeah.
Are you going to do it?
No, you can do it now.
Okay. So there was one question submitted on the floor. The question was from Marilyn Morgan, five thirty-one, who wins zero rows. And the question was, uh, regarding a letter that was dated on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, and she wanted to ensure that the board was aware. Uh, the second part of the question is that, um, she wanted to know if it would be possible for virtual comments and questions to be heard during the Board of Education meetings.
That's the only one?
That is the only question for that.
So in reference to the letter, um, Stephanie will follow up with Mrs. Morgan regarding the letter. And in reference to virtual comments during the meeting, we're going to continue as per our policy that if you're here in public, you can ask questions. If you're virtual, you can ask the questions prior to the meeting and we'll answer them through this forum. Does anyone here have any questions?
No.
No. Lil Paige?
Oh, you state your name and address.
I'll state your name and address.
Lil Paige, one thirty-six, Clinton Avenue. Actually, Dr. Kishar anticipated my questions and she's taking care of it, so I don't have to ask my question. But I did want to give you an update on latch key night care because we, we are, you know, we have, we're planning to open full time as we always did in the past. We did set an enrollment limit at the elementary schools. It wasn't necessary at the middle school because there's very few children that attend there anyway. The limit was forty for the AM program at Berkeley and Gibbs, and there is still room in both of those schools for the AM program. It's eighty for the afternoon program. There's still room at the Berkeley School, but we have reached our limit at Gibbs School and there's currently thirteen people on the waiting list. Everything is dated and numbered. I go to the post office spots every day so that, you know, everything comes in in order. We're hoping that, I don't know, maybe after school starts, you know, we'll see how it goes and if we can raise the limit or take the limit off, we're perfectly willing to do that. We're hoping that we can do it, but right now with what's going on, that kind of supports the fact that we are limiting it. It's, it's still a lot of children, but, and it's, you have to understand too, it's a structured, unstructured environment. It's not like when they're sitting in a classroom. So in order to just keep everyone safe, we thought it was important to impose that. And we know that we can always raise the number. We can't go back. So we couldn't just start out with an indeterminate number of children. So that's where we're at. And then it, as time goes by, if we're able to change that, then certainly we'll do it immediately. And everyone's been notified who's on the waiting list already. And as they come in, I notify them and everybody's bills have been sent out, the invoices. So we're ready to be up and running on, I guess, we're, we start the morning, no, I forget. We start the morning program on the first day of school, the afternoon program on Friday because those first two days are our categories. So the morning program starts then, but the afternoon program starts on Friday.
Great. Yeah?
Yeah, but then I think it was very prudent to establish, uh, those kinds of enrollment limits. Out of curiosity, what were enrollments like pre-pandemic?
Well, as we won't talk about.
Not that long.
But I think, I, I think probably, I think about a hundred at each of the elementary schools. I think, because that, that's really how Mary and I came up with the number by looking at the average of what we had in the past. So I, I'm going to say about a hundred. I only know the number of families because I bill. So I'm billing families. I don't really know the number of individual children. Mary knows that number, but I think that's a downward.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a comment? Please state your name and address.
You will, P two forty eighth street. Um, I have a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to commend everybody, um, you guys did amazing stuff last year. I said it to, to, you know, officially, like, you guys did amazing because the teachers, everybody, just comparing it to what I've heard from friends in other districts, other states, other, you know, areas, I'm very impressed and thank you so much for all the work they've done. Uh, second, I wanted to reiterate what Ms. Ryan had said, just, um, I'm sure that you have a contingency plan, um, what concerns me and a lot of people are the variants that are going around, the fact that our little children are not, are not and cannot be vaccinated. And they're the ones that have the problem with the social distancing and the masks and so forth. Um, just last week, my, uh, younger son, my six-year-old, um, had like nasal congestion and things like that. So we decided it was no problem, but we have to keep him out of camp or leave. So having said that, having a contingency for a student like that, um, like Ms. Ryan said, would be very beneficial. And the last thing that I wanted to say was, um, with the masks, I mean, just sitting here, one air conditioner turned off, it's hot. Um, summer, uh, spring, fall, it gets hot in the classrooms. So I was wondering if there was any, if there's been any discussion of, since the ventilation systems were upgraded and, um, I don't know much about the SRF funds, but if any of the SRF funds were going to use for air conditioning systems throughout the schools that don't have them. Um, so that...
Stephanie, you have a question? Yes, your funds.
Or any other funds?
She's tied being...
Well, just yes.
Yes. Is that the last question?
That's the last.
Okay. I didn't want to cut you off. Um, yes, there has been considerations and the, um, last pool of the SRF funds, um, the initial portion of that has been submitted and there was various questions that a survey was sent out, um, with a lot of responses, um, that was included, but the final grant is not submitted until November. So we still have time to explore different options, um, on upgrading the, the ventilations as well as outfitting, um, so with air conditioning. I tend to say that the rooftop unit at the Gibbs Elementary School was previously just heat. That will include air conditioning, um, and that unit is for the gym. So, um, what was previously not air conditioned will be air conditioned at, at Gibbs.
But that concerns me because Gibbs has a lot of assets in the world and the air conditioning there is the other three schools don't.
Oh, that was just an example of one that, that is happening currently. That's not to say that none of the other schools will be outfitted with any sort of additional air conditions. Um, that grant hasn't been submitted yet.
I don't want to clarify that Gibbs HVAC was not a choice to replace that to get air conditioning, that it broke. So it needed to be replaced. So that was one of the things, right? So it wasn't a matter of Gibbs was chosen to have that done. It broke and there was nothing in the gym. So they had to, they had to replace it. Why replace it with something that isn't going to be that? When you replace it, replace it better.
Sorry, one last question for that. Um, so now that Mr. Colton has been, um, known over the mark as the principal, is he going to continue with the, as director of the five oh four plans or is there somebody else designated?
Right now, yes. For now, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay. I seek approval to close the public. Need a motion. Tammy, seconded by Judy Smee. All favor? Aye. Okay. Any board member request for additional information? No? Okay, I'm going to adjourn. Need a motion to adjourn the meeting? Nicole Dunn, seconded by Paige Ryan. All favor? Aye.